Can we take attendance?
Becky Baisel.
Present.
Ryan Davis.
He said present.
Okay. Dave Pembell.
Present.
Kelsey Waits.
Present.
Scott Gergen.
Here.
Stephanie Mom, here. And Lisa Hadine.
Here.
Kelsey, you're on mute.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Working on it.
So move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? I would like to add in, just so that people know, in the other discussion, to have a quick update from MSBA regarding the process for next week, given the governor's most recent executive order, just so that everyone is aware. Yeah, and we can talk about it in other business. To just, MSBA sent me some updates about an hour ago to just go over with the board at the end of the meeting. So is there any more discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Right, motion carries. Alright, so next up is an approval of the minutes from the January 30th, 2020 special meeting of the board, February 5th, 2020 special meeting of the board, February 26th, regular meeting of the board, March 3rd, special meeting of the board, March 18th, emergency meeting of the board, and March 24th, special meeting of the board. Is anyone else hearing me talking? From the past, okay. 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 Alright, so do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next up, we have a recognition of visitors. There are no visitors present. However, if you are watching from home, thank you for listening, and we appreciate you sitting in. Alright, announcements and recognitions.
So I can do the good news items right now, and I'll be brief through the format of the meeting. You would, we'd have to look all over the place to find good news items, but there was a lot of great stuff happening this week, so I'll highlight just a few of them, and I know some of them you'd like to talk about later on in the meeting. We want to thank our food service staff, care professionals, and other HPS employees, and Hastings Bus Company staff for implementing daily meal service on March 23rd, or 1,500 meals were distributed the first day, 1,843 meals the second day, and we had about 1,900 today. And the goal is to not have a lot of leftover meals, but to be able to offer one to everybody. So we made 2,000 today, and we distributed 1,900, so there's 100 that can go back in that aren't wasted, and we want to try to keep that the minimal amount each day, so that's really been a huge undertaking out of nowhere, and great people with positive attitudes participating in that, and good interaction with kids and families, which is entirely missed right now. We currently have 88, I believe, I have 84 on there, but I think this afternoon we had 88 children registered for childcare for the families of emergency workers. An average of 35 children have participated each day. Today, I believe, was 38. The YMCA also opened to provide childcare to help create another opportunity. Hats off to the fabulous HPS employees who are providing a caring and safe environment. And our teaching staff has been preparing to post the initial distance learning plans on our website on March 27th. They are utilizing a wide range of creative approaches to maintaining both student contact, progress toward academic standards. And the superintendent report will talk about discussion on these items, or any other items that are changing rapidly, and also impacted by announcements today.
Alright, we covered the good news items. I'm remembering to unmute myself, and we're moving into items for discussion. So to begin with is the district response to the governor's executive order update.
I write this in writing, just to have a document, especially as people have a lot of free time on their hands, and they're spreading messages back and forth. There's somewhere they can go back and see what it was in writing, what hopefully accurate information is there. These are things that you may want to talk about tonight, and definitely will need to talk about moving forward in this dynamic situation, and I want you to have a record of that as well. And I'll leave it to the chair to decide at any point in the meeting if we want to talk about any of these, but I will highlight them right now. I know that we have a few other district staff members that are participating in the meeting in case we need to get some feedback from them. We'll definitely need their input as we go forward, whether you need that tonight or not. It depends on how much time you want to spend on the items, but there are some of the key things in this evolving situation. We've reconciled our staff absence reporting, so we know where all of our employees are, which was important coming back on Monday to know if there's anybody who's missing, or perhaps, you know, has a health issue or something that we need to reach out to. So everybody is accounted for, and we're using special absence codes that are related to COVID-19. They'll need to align with the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, FF-CRA, which goes into effect April 2nd, and today, the federal government changes to April 1st. That is basically creating FMLA categories for people that are impacted by COVID-19. So right now, the district is coding them, so we know why they're not participating. And we're aware where they're at and what their situation is. They're not using any of their own leave. And ultimately, by the first, we're going to have to reconcile if they're given this special FMLA category that was created, and that may create direct and indirect expenses for the district. And so Jen Subert is back in town this week, catching up, and will be providing us guidance as to how we can try to quantify those direct and indirect costs as they accumulate. The meal program is very successful, and we've capped at a total of 2,000 meals per day. All school-aged children are eligible to participate. That's the critical message, and I sent you some background context on that, too, I think. And it's going to be communicated out today through our website, through Facebook, the district Facebook, and through the internal raider update as well, clarifying that the goal is food security, that the meals aren't connected to anybody's jobs directly, but there are connections between everything we're doing and the finances, and the successful programs are going to help us in the long run. If they're unsuccessful, they're going to eat into our unrestricted fund balance in the long run, so every time we have a successful program, when the executive order orders us to do something, and we're successful at it, we're better off financially. So we're, you know, going to keep trying to keep those essential services as the participation strong, and the balance of staff committed to them, utilizing the staff that we're already paying as well as we can. And we mentioned YMCA's free childcare. On March 24th, we are providing the option for teaching staff and other, as of March 24th, we are providing the option for teaching staff and other employees to productively be productive remotely to work at home. Only Pinecrest teachers have been directed to work at other locations to date. That is essentially going to be changing by Monday. We are developing a critical district employee contingency plan, so all of our district employees are considered essential. But if they don't need to be there for critical purposes, we are trying to get them a way to help comply with the governor's orders. We are anticipating that effective March 30th, employee time coded to special education must be engaged in eligible activities only. So that means shifting staff, and that's a daily, sometimes hourly thing, where we shift staff that are available to whatever our needs are for that day. We've been using the special education paras to help with childcare and meal service, and on Monday, they'll be switching to supporting the instruction. Our K-12 plus teachers will post their distance learning plans on March 27th. Equitable distribution of learning technology is a work in progress, and will be customized by site. Send an email that give you the high school and middle school plans that are out right now, and also heads up on where the elementary schools are right now. We'll talk about community ed here at the bottom. Since March 18th, we are no longer receiving revenue in community education Fund IV for most categories, where we need to determine if any of our formula funding continues for Fund IV. But many categories are no longer funded. They are district responsibility, and the governor has, actually, the commissioner clarified today that any any costs that the district incurs in meeting the mandate for childcare and food service needs to be funded by the unrestricted fund balance. There may be someday some type of reimbursement or something that comes back to the schools, but right now, they're saying planning using your own funds, that, so we need to move from our emergency status to a more thoughtful status, understanding that distance learning is now in place for a minimum through April. We will need to look at the costs that were incurring in providing these services, and like I said before, if we're successful at them, we have less costs when we plan and match up the demand with our staff very well, we'll have more costs. All programs in community ed have been closed. No refunds have been issued for preschool registrations to date. We are not accepting new registrations. So if there's any desire on the board to offer refunds, because preschool has been disrupted here lately, we could talk about that. Otherwise, the main thing is not to take any new registrations because we're not offering preschool. Our programs are not mandated under the executive order to be continuing as distance learning programs. Board provided support during the emergency meeting of March 18th, retained staff funded by community education and reassigned them to childcare. So extended childcare for emergency workers currently is being offered for no fee. It's an option that the board has long-term to charge for extended childcare, even if it's emergency workers, or to continue to offer that for free. If we're using staff that we're retaining, our costs get pretty much neutralized in that case. Preschool programs don't match the criteria under the executive order to require distance learning. Therefore, we must decide if we will accept preschool registrations, knowing that the instruction will be solely distance learning. So right now, our licensed teachers in preschool are preparing distance learning. I'll be very time sensitive that we decide if we're going to offer it and charge for it, because we know the value would be different than the holistic experience that kids get when they come to school for distance learning. If we choose not to accept registrations, we don't have to offer distance learning, and we can repurpose those licensed teachers to help with the childcare, because they'd be a good match for that, so that is a discussion topic. We could close preschool, reassign those licensed teachers to childcare during the closure period. We must make timely decisions about whether to continue to support community education staff from the general fund. Some employees are not able to work in reassigned duties, and there will be direct or indirect costs associated with any leave categories that they may be used, including that new FF-CRA category. So we are not, under the executive order, allowed to lay off community ed workers. We're not getting funding for them, so we should repurpose them. We will have costs associated with anybody that's in any of the COVID-related leave categories, whether it's their own leave or these new federal leave categories. And if we have employees who choose not to report because they don't want to do the reassigned duties, they can use their own leave categories. If they run out of leave categories, and this is still in place, they'll essentially be vacating their position, so we're not actively reducing any positions. We just wouldn't refill any positions that are vacated until we're back to normal. So I'll turn that over to see if, we just want to think about those things, talk about them, or what, want those on your radar, because that's what we were up against this week, and as I look at the executive order today, right before coming over here, it says that Executive Order 20-02 is still in effect. Nothing has changed with regard to schools other than we now know that we will begin distance learning on March 30th, and will continue at least through April, and most likely more information coming on that later, but we could proceed with that part of things.
So at this point, I don't know, I think we should have a discussion on it and see where the board is thinking.
I was thinking, because as Jeff went through many of these points, I had questions, or I felt like we should discuss them or provide feedback. Maybe structurally, we can just move through the list.
Yep, I think that sounds good. So the first would be reconciling staff absence reporting, and if there's any discussion or questions regarding that piece.
Share that you can imagine how difficult that is to do when this gets flipped upside down, and so a lot of people were involved in doing a great job of accounting for everybody, because it's not like any other.
Next would be the special absence codes related to COVID-19, and aligning with the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. Any questions regarding that or discussion?
My only question, and it's going to be to somebody in the district office, is just administratively, if this starts on the first, will we be in an okay position? Is that something that can be accomplished between now and the 1st of April to add a leave code?
Hi, this is Jen Subert. So yeah, we have been working on that already. Jenny Berg and myself are putting together some scenarios, the different reasons that employees can be out. And we will have leave codes ready for that, and we also plan to communicate that to employees prior to the first.
Okay, thank you, Jen.
Alright, the meal program has been very successful, and discussing about the 2,000 meals a day, and I know Director Hadine did have some questions about.
Yeah, I had a question, and it started back when, even on the first day. I know when we had our emergency meeting on this topic, the feedback that Michael was getting from Richfield was in the 100 to 200 type response, which was dramatically low, and I feel like our concern at that point was advertising the program and making sure that people were aware of it, and then our first day came in at 1,500. And honestly, I saw a lot of activity on social media that was maybe indicated that we hadn't been clear. People were saying, oh, you should all take these meals. Everybody should take these meals. If you don't take these meals, the food will be wasted. Bus drivers will be laid off. Food service staff will be laid off. I saw this on social media postings, and and then I saw frequently people would say, oh, well, I'm going to, I think my two-year-old would love to have one of these. It seems really fun. I could take a couple to the neighbors. I mean, I don't know that this was in the hundreds, but it was in the discussion, and then it struck me that that feels like a just a messaging problem. And I wanted to be clear, especially as our number got to 1,800 the next day, and 1,900 today, if I understood Dr. Peschta correctly, what can we really continue to serve, both in terms of preparing the meals and getting them out to people, and then the message that went out last night about we made it to 1,800, we're going to prioritize, you know, bus, bus, elementary, middle school, high school, and we're stopped when we run out. It made me think about, if I were to be a person that lived across the parking lot here in the townhomes, and I intended and needed to have my kids served by the meal at the high school, I feel sort of anxious now. I read that text last night, and all of a sudden, I'm like, shoot, maybe there's not going to be meals at the high school. I feel like I'm at the bottom of the list. Maybe I should go find a bus stop. Maybe I should go find an elementary school, and I don't want that to be our message either. I want to support the program, and it's amazing to me that we're getting 2,000 meals out the door a day, given the constraints that we have, and I want to continue to do that. I want people who need this, when and if they need it. If they need it for a week because of constraints around logistics, I want them to be able to take it. I want people to understand, nobody's going to get laid off. No food is going to go to waste. And our intent is to have this available through this entire period. It's a tricky message, but I'm not sure we're being clear right now.
I think such is the nature of social media. I mean, every day, the governor's warning against what you're taking in, what you're listening to, who you listen to, so I think that what we probably should do, to the best of our ability, is get out our own communication over our social media area over and say, you know, here's some commonly perceived or common perceptions. Maybe we just need to sense and debunk it, if you will. I mean, for lack of a better way to put it, anything that's out there that's false, I think we need to, as soon as humanly possible, clarify it from us in this room.
Well, and I think the point that I was trying to make was that, I would like it to come, I don't want to be in the dialogue with somebody on Facebook. I'm not going to do that, and I don't think that's what you were suggesting at all. I think a clarifying position, and I know we're sort of in between food service directors, either from the superintendent's office or the food service, is just a clarifying point, just a clarifying point. I mean, I'm reading what's in raider update, which is, I know, only going out to staff. A lot of kudos. We haven't turned anybody away. And then it addresses the fact that there is this lack of clarity. So I'd just be curious to see us, I'd like to see us get a message out and reinforce it, be aware of what's happening on social media, clarify. I feel like it's going to stabilize, but we should be the one.
I agree too, because my kids are considered walkers, and they get a ride every day, but there's a bus in our neighborhood, and we have no idea what time the bus comes, so some of these kids are missing the food opportunity because they don't know what time the bus comes, or it's down the block. So I've heard a lot of people messaging me, do you know what time, should we call the bus company? What time is this bus coming? Maybe even bus route times for certain neighborhoods, or yes, the same thing about, we're not going to have food at the middle school, so if my kids decide to walk to the middle school, are there going to be meals there for them? If they're going to take their seven-year-old sister, I will cross the highway to get them, too. Are there going to be meals there for them? So I think that's having that message sent out that from us is a great idea.
I thought we had communicated that, but maybe I saw it in some other format other than where I thought I saw it. I thought we communicated it was two hours after the normal bus drop time.
Some people don't, some people get rides to school every morning, and then, like I said, in my neighborhood, we're considered walkers, but there is a bus in our neighborhood as well. So some of them don't even know what time the bus comes in our neighborhood.
So will it be helpful to put out the time, like actually put the time?
I think so, or like certain times, because then there was a lot of communication on social media as well as, well, the bus hasn't come at this time, so what would be the ranges of, you know, yes, they do run late, but maybe just clarify the bus routes in certain neighborhoods or in all neighborhoods, yes, pickup time was supposed to be at 7:15 this time, so expect the bus there between 7:10 and 7:20, so that people are, they're not missing their opportunities as well.
Yeah, and I think we've talked about that, the need to, I don't know, like Director Davis had said, debunk the idea that people would lose their jobs if they weren't taking meals. I know I've heard that from people as we've been at the bus stop saying, wow, I don't really need this, but I heard if I don't take it, a bus driver's going to get fired. And I think working to get our narrative out there is one way to try to stop the spread of the false narrative. And that doesn't mean that we're going in and we're commenting on every comment, or every person who says that, that just means that there is a district communication that goes out that says this. And then that can get shared, and then slowly the correct information can get spread out, rather than letting the incorrect information to kind of win out on social media.
Yeah, and I think I heard Dr. Peschta maybe say that that was a piece that was going to come out. I just feel like what was said in raider update was more about calling attention to this particular question. So I'd like to know what's going, what's likely to go out. The question of, and I think a clarifying point is courtesy busing. So there are neighborhoods, and it may be that you're in one, where there is a bus that runs as a courtesy route bus, so it's not an assigned bus route. And there's an assigned bus for your younger kids, right? And right on the bubble.
Yes, my house is on the bubble, so we're considered walkers, and then the block over has a scheduled bus, so we are the courtesy bus, the one over. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so there's always people on that line. There's also people that are clearly in a courtesy bus route. I mean, I don't know what to say to somebody, if you don't know your own bus time, I guess, maybe the bus company would answer that question. I'd like to believe, I had to stop and think about our bus time, because my son drives himself every day, but I just at the broader level want to be sure that we're saying we want this food. We want everybody to have security around their food. And we know that you might have a week of insecurity, and it might not be about your family's finances. It might not be about anything else. It might be some logistical constraint, and then the next week, you might not need it. That issue may be resolved, and you may feel secure in your food. So take it when you need it, and don't take it when you don't. This is about providing food security to our K-12 plus Stars program kids. And I think it would be fair to share links to partners, like the YMCA, who's partnering with the Sheridan Project to do family-level food. And just having a link and reminding people of that, reminding people of how to contact Hastings Family Service if they have larger food insecurity questions beyond their K-12 kids.
No, I would just like a little clarification, because we've heard that it's school-age K-12, and then we've also heard kids under 18, and so for providing food, what does the executive order talk to us about providing? What does it say?
So I'm preparing answers for the different questions, and whenever we're ready, I could try to answer them, and I might skip some, and you might have to repeat it just so that we get clarification on it, because it's a very complicated undertaking, and it's hard to get those nuances out to the public, so the public message probably has to be pretty general, and the board probably needs to, you know, understand the nuances better. Start with the question of what's being communicated, because Director Hadine talked about the raider update that she just looked at. So at 3:30 each day, our leadership team has been meeting and trying to pull together what are the important things to get out in the raider update, and then what goes on the website and other communication things, and then what's happening at the buildings. The buildings are trying to limit their communication so they don't overwhelm families, because the teachers are now communicating with them, and that can be a lot already. But we are getting people in the habit that we'll post something up on the website, and we'll send a raider update every day. So what was seen on the raider update, that's also going up on the website. I just don't know, because it was being worked on when I left the office. So that same message is going out there, and the message yesterday was to try to let people know that there is a max. And then the follow-up today is a little bit more about that employment thing, because that's, once again, very nuanced. Under the executive order, which is what every decision we're being based on is made, even the extras that the board chooses to provide, but if we just go back to the actual executive order, which is now extended, we are supposed to provide food service. And we are doing it through a summer-type program through the federal lunch program, so all those federal guidelines still apply about data privacy and nutrition and all those type of things. Under this executive order, any student that's school age, so that means they're enrolled in a school program somewhere, not, you know, preschool or whatever, but anything that has state funding associated with it, or enrolled kids, all the way up to, you know, our 21-year-olds in Stars, they're all eligible to get food from us, and any student that's a Minnesota student can also show up and get food. I doubt very many are, but they are eligible in this because it's a federal lunch program. The only thing that we can do is decide how to distribute it and cut it off when our supplies are maxed out, which two weeks from now, we don't know what our supply chain is going to look like. Right now, we're looking like this week and next week are pretty solid doing 2,000 meals, and the first two days, we were literally running out meals to any place that was short, because this distribution is the key to it. And then at the middle school and high school, we were making more meals as people walked up, so that everybody got a meal. So the great thing is And then um at the middle school and high school, we were making more meals as people walked up so that everybody got a meal. So the great thing is. The, the number of meals that we're doing because every meal that's taken is a nice neutral thing for us as a district. When we have extra meals and. We can't move them forward to future days or they've been out too long, wherever that's where we'll start to lose money. So today. Was an example of a near perfect day, nineteen hundred meals accepted, two thousand made, a hundred can go back and become a part of tomorrow's and still be. Fresh and um and, and useful for that. So that's the ideal, turning nobody away. We felt like yesterday when we were gonna cap that because we just can't, can't crank out. If we have to do this for weeks. Our staff just can't keep up there. I mean, they're just humming full speed. So um. Two thousand is, is the max and it's also tied to supplies. Um, so that they could run out and we wanted to get the word out that. The latest time in the day, it has nothing to do with the site. It's the latest time in the day is obviously as we move the food from bus stops to schools. Eventually, if it does run out, it'd be the last two stops that run out. And we can't, we can't pick who gets the meals. We can't ask who needs the meals. So I tried to get out there that. Kind of that subtle message that if you really need those meals, you may need to go to elementary school because if you show up at one o'clock. Or twelve fifty, there may not be a meal for you. But we also don't want to tell people. Don't do it if you don't need it because if we serve a thousand meals and we've made a thousand now, now we're taking a hit on those days because we. We can't push those meals that far forward. So right now it's working really well. Um, I know we had Michael share that Richfield, they went from a hundred fifty to, to three hundred from day one to day two. Rochester reported yesterday that they served twenty two hundred meals and they're. I don't know, five or six times bigger than we are and a lot more need out in the community. So this is just. Truly a phenomenon that the staff, our staff has been able to pull this off. And right now we're right where we need to. And I think. Trying every day to keep um adjusting that message. Um, to get it right. The one thing that I tried to communicate today is that they're not directly connected to employment. But it's also not accurate that there's zero connection. And that's tied to the executive order. We must honor our bus contract. We don't control whether bus drivers get laid off or not. Um, Hastings Bus Company can lay off drivers if they don't have anything for them to do. But we have to pay them and they have to provide a service similar to what we contracted with them to. So we're not in control of that. So we have to be careful about that. Our food service staff is guaranteed a job as long as this executive order is in place. If they report, they may not be doing food service. They may be doing cleaning or something else, but they're. The only way they won't have a job is if they refuse to do what's been assigned to them. The thing that's keeping their spirits up right now is they know they're making food and they're getting it out to kids. And they're so excited to be doing this. It's, it's just amazing. So right now this is really good. Uh, I had teachers who agreed. Because we were, we were moving more kitchen staff back to the kitchen and off the buses. I had six teachers agreed to come for one shift today to help out. They were getting paid to do distance learning prep, but they were okay with, there's a hundred fifteen. Staff on a list who are willing to come on short notice and pitch in for a day at either site. Uh, childcare or that. And they were just so happy to see kids, you know, so. This is really working well and I completely agree that we need to daily keep adjusting that message. Um, but we also have to be careful that nothing is as easy as it seems because. It's just, I don't know what day things are gonna be as easy as you think they should be anymore, but I hope. I hope that answers some of the questions. I hope it explains some of the, the details and I'm gladly answer any questions.
Um, while you were speaking, Jeff, Jen Subert provided us some good information that bus times. Are listed in infinite campus for parents. So if you have a bus pickup, it'll, I think it lists your route number either even. And then it will give you the time and then we're running two hours late. I, I appreciate that it's, this is a very complex. Machine more so than it appears from the outside. I just want us to be. I don't want us to be sending messages that make people more anxious and I'm concerned that, that might have happened and. As we go forward, we're just, I think we do have to keep refining it and clarifying this is about providing food security. And. You know, we're gonna keep our people employed. We care about them as people and it's in alliance, in alignment with the executive order.
I'm glad that um. And pointed out that you can look at infinite campus. We could also post routes, but there's twenty five routes and that's a lot of stuff to be. Clogging up the website, but we could do that if that becomes. A popular request or wherever, we can put all twenty five routes up there. Um, it also gives the public who aren't students. Information about where to go to get meals, which then would, is not what they're intended for. It wouldn't be a bad thing that. People who are not. Students got food, but that's not what this program is for. And if you put the bus times out there for the public. They could just show up and say, give me five meals and. Now we're, then we're, then we're having to ask for them to verify and that's gonna slow everything down. So that and then.
No, I, I unmuted myself for a minute and that's, I think that's a fair point. I, I would have. Some like longer term concerns about like about exact bus stops and times being posted around issues of non custodial parents and. Things that I have the, the wonder of not knowing, um, having to be concerned with. Oh, Jen just posted, people could also call. Six, five, one. Four, eight, zero, seven, zero, zero, three, and they could provide specific bus stop times. I presume that's a district office number. That totally distracted me.
I'm gonna respond for a moment. Um, your point is very well, well taken, Director Hadeen about anxiety goes up with messages. We are working as a district team to deliver these messages in like the formats that I said because. People can go get that information and we're being careful about what comes at, at them and we're, might be overdoing that right now. And we're trying not to create anxiety, but for example, the governor's press conference today. In my opinion, it was very clear. It was very level headed and it was to the point. But people's anxiety level went up because of the topic and, and we have to recognize that the topics bring up anxiety. And, and I'm a hundred percent on board with. Collaborating and trying to just refine the message and refine the message. Um, I really wanna do, I mean, once again, I said this at our emergency meeting. I really feel that ethics are an important part right now. So being totally honest about things. Is, is very important. And so I'm trying to be a, a fact checker on. On things that go out. So you know, when the response is, people are gonna lose their job to say, no one will lose their job. That's not totally accurate. We have to be careful about those. Automatic responses and I, I would just keep doing that. It's. It's an interesting process and we appreciate everybody.
Yeah, and to go back to the collaboration, that was actually my point is as we refine the message, I think. I mean, you can make some statements about we're gonna meet our contract with Hastings Bus Company because we will. And we're gonna keep our people employed, but I'd like us to also part, be sharing information about our community partners. Cause if somebody. Has been using this program. Because they have larger food insecurity issues, I really wanna make sure. That they know about the wise program. I really wanna make sure they know about Hastings Family Service Program. So let's make sure that. That where we see needs that really don't quite fit us, but that are really true needs that we find our. Community partners that can help.
I would also, if we hit the two thousand mark and we're not able to have meals at the. Facilities that we walk to, I hope that we'll come up with some sort of system so that we can still have meals there because there may very well be needs. Um, in those areas and kids may not have access to be able to get to a bus stop or drive to a different location with an earlier pickup. Or something like that. So making sure that there are options. Um, for people at all sections and that there's not just kids who are walking to school are. The last to get the meals always. Um, that I don't think that that's an equitable food distribution plan if we hit our cap. So.
And um, nothing is ever gonna be perfect with this. I just. For the, for the benefit of the people who are participating in this whole process. When this was. Directed for us to do. And we talked about last Wednesday, I could not even dream of this successful of a program and um. I think that was a shot of adrenaline for the community for this. Week where there was no instruction and um. So although we keep trying to refine it, I, I don't wanna lose track of the fact that it's, it's just an amazing um. Amazingly successful undertaking.
Alright, so do we have any other comments on that? Otherwise it seems like just trying to refine the district communication. Uh, to make sure that people in the community understand um both what our program is and other programs in the community so that if they do have. Food needs, that they know who else they can reach out to as well. Does that sound? Sound good? Alright, so then next um is talking about the point of childcare for families of emergency workers and how well that's going. Um, and then also the YMCA, that's all under the same bullet.
I had two specific questions on this. Uh, one is about. Numbers. I know we have eighty eight enrolled and this is a childcare of, this is sort of a backup plan, right? You can enroll for no cost and you can. Receive a service. You don't have to call in that day. So what's the breakpoint at which we move from using Pinecrest facilities? To high school, he's uh, middle school facilities, numbers. I'm just curious. I know we've had in that thirty to forty range. I'm curious about that. And then um. I suspect you don't know the answer to this, Brian, but I'd be curious to know if the Y has any enrollment at this point and if, if their program, if we know, does it extend beyond? Um, essential workers, because we're, we're. Obligated under the executive order to do emergency workers. We've chosen to extend to essential as long as we can do it. I'm just curious if we know, is the Y providing? Childcare beyond. Essential workers.
Brian, can you unmute yourself, please?
He's trying.
How about now? I am definitely not a millennial. Okay, so um. I'd reference you back to Derek Jagger on that one. Um, he's kind of the best answer. I can tell you though, that there are certainly kids registered at the Y. Um, I just don't know how many levels down that they're going currently.
So I'm gonna give you a different voice. I'm gonna invite Carrie Gore if she's able to. She has been talking to Derek and has updates on that. She shared it with me today, but it'd be best to hear it directly from Carrie. And then I can come back to your numbers questions because I don't see Paul Baker on the um list. So actually, you know what, I'll invite Carrie to cover the. Um, she's been working with Paul on. The, the plans for when we extend to the middle school. And the first day, we wanted to make sure we were ready to go to the middle school in case. True emergencies were happening and people are like, yeah, power's out and I dropped my kids off and. We wanted to just take everybody in a true emergency that first day and see what staff actually showed up so that we were adequately staffed. Now, moving forward, we're prepared to deal with the fluctuation in. Childcare, including a big surge if we, if we have one based on anything happening out there in the world. So those numbers that I gave you. Um, come from the planning that Paul and Carrie and others have done. I'm a little. Talk about the transition to middle school as we need it. And um, also just knowing that the middle school is available just for a change of scenery for the kids to go to a different gym. Or to walk hallways on a rainy day or whatever it is. So that's, that's an asset for them, which is why we picked Pinecrest. And Carrie can give you updated information on the YMCA communication. We'll see if she can.
Can you hear me? Okay, great. Um, so uh, Paul and I have um really spread out the classrooms for social distancing. And we both agree that sixty five students will be the cap at Pinecrest before we move to the middle school. Right now we're seeing an average of thirty five per day. And like we said, we've had eighty, I think eighty one, maybe a little bit more now tonight. Registered for the program. I've been talking with Derek as well. Uh, my last conversation with him was yesterday. And they had two registered at the YMCA.
Carrie, do you know what level the Y is going down to?
Uh, thank you. Um, what I've heard from Derek is that of course their priority is tier one and tier two, but that they can serve all at the YMCA.
Alright. I was gonna say, I'm sorry. It takes me so long to find the unmute button. Um. We'll just keep asking you questions, Carrie, about the Y apparently. Do you happen to know off the top of your head what their max enrollment would be?
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't know that. Uh, well, actually I do. Uh, I take that back. I think that Derek said. That they thought the capacity was fifty.
I was just gonna add that the YMCA is charging forty dollars per day. And um, so families who don't, don't qualify as emergency um workers. It may become something that becomes attractive to them that they're kind of on that quasi emergency thing.
Okay, do we have any more questions or discussion on that?
Carrie, I'm just curious. You think I would know this, but I don't. Um. Cause I'm not there right now um for the next couple of weeks. Is that forty dollars either Jeff or Carrie across all tier levels? At the Y?
I believe so, Brian.
Thank you, Carrie.
Okay, so the next bullet is as of March twenty fourth, we're providing the option for teaching staff and other employees. To remotely work from home if they can do productive work. Any questions about that? Discussion.
So that was mu- this is Lisa. So that was Monday, as of Monday. Is that right? It's Tuesday. Okay. Alright, so everybody had to report on the twenty fourth or twenty third. And then was that a? Was that decided across the district or did it just by, were staff sort of told by supervisors? You can come in or you can stay home, whichever is. Uh, whatever suits you. And is that, is that the case going from now till the end of the week that staff? That, that a teaching staff have a choice of being in the building or being at home? Is that true at all sites now?
So um, we're focused on teaching staff only. On the twenty third, they were by executive order supposed to report and that was. You know, people are saying, well, we're not supposed to report or we're, you know, we're supposed to work, we can work from home, but that was clear. From the commissioner and in the executive order that they should report on the twenty third. Turned out to be very valuable and if anybody. Was opposed to um showing up on the twenty third, they could enter. Sick leave or one of the COVID categories or whatever was the reason that they weren't coming in. So we knew where they, where they were at. The, the. Instructional leaders wanted to work with the staff. They knew that there was a potential they would not be able to get back in the buildings. So it was really important if this goes long term to get the things that they need. They spread out across the building. I think all the meetings were done through video conference. I don't think. Anybody had a, a meeting where everybody gathered around it, even, even in a spread out fashion. And I had told um the middle school and Pinecrest principals on the Sunday, so the twenty second. I had told them um. You have authorization to move your staff out as quickly as they're able to. Because we know we need a space in Pinecrest and we don't want the kids exposed to teachers who we haven't. You know, the nurses haven't screened the teachers. We're screening the kids, but they haven't screened the teachers. So um, they literally came in and got out as fast as they. They, they could to go work at another site or to go home. Middle school was authorized to do that. It turned out that they didn't need the space on Monday and um Steve Kovach was. Productively working with staff and they were engaged and they were doing things and not. Uh, so he ended up keeping them all day, even though he was authorized to send them home. By the time we got to Tuesday. It appeared that everybody was ready. To go with choice. Meaning teachers who still needed or wanted to work from their, let's say they don't have great internet at home. They could come to their room and be isolated there. We were giving them that choice effective Tuesday. The only people who were told they couldn't come back to their room was Pinecrest. Because of the situation we described earlier. Now, moving forward. Um, we're interpreting the, the new um stay home um. Advice, safe at home from the um governor and we're gonna try to move even more employees. That can be productive towards home. As of tomorrow, we're allowing teachers to come in if they want to. We understand that we may need to by Monday. Tell them that they can't come in, which is what we've tried to prepare for is there's a scenario where you can't come in. Right now they still have a choice and they're working where they can work best. We have the um. Technology and other um items, distribution Thursday and Friday where there'll be some staff participating in that. My um prediction is that by Monday. Ninety percent or more of the teachers will be working from home. They are allowed under this executive order as educators to travel and to go to work. Doesn't mean they have to, just because they can, doesn't mean. We have to, we want to spread things out, we want to get people out there. Um, and and every. Every team that we have is dialing in who needs to come in. And who can work from home, obviously, a custodian. Has nothing to do from home, uh, unless it's professional development or something like that. Um, but it could be a time where they can use some of their leave because we need less custodians every day. Um, so we're dialing in that and the supervisor is the key part here. Because no matter what we send out as a district, it needs to be dialed in. For their specific job, and so we're really empowering our supervisors to not only where there's know where their staff is at. Um, but to be giving them those things and. We also understand the concept, if somebody is wounded, it takes two people to help somebody. If somebody is coming in because we told them they have to come in, but we have nothing for them to do. It takes virtually two people to come up with something for them to do, so that's not very efficient either, so. Literally, some people are being told to stay home and we're not giving them little to do. That'll change when we catch up. We're just running at full speed right now and we get back to a walk, we'll be able to increase the professional development opportunities and things like that. So I hope that. Answered.
Okay. So are there any more questions or discussion along that point? Okay, so next up, we are anticipating that effective March thirtieth, employee time coded to special ed. Uh, must be engaged in eligible activities only.
I see Dave and Sarah are on the conference, so if they want to. I know that directives came out today that were posted on the MDE site, so if there's any updating on that. I would invite them um. To mic up.
Yeah, as far as right now, um, there were no updates that were changed from what I saw, which which led. This to the twenty seventh as the final day that we could use non-specialized, or excuse me, specialized staff in a non-specialized capacity. Um, so I haven't seen anything different than that, so we had already started working with the the team here to have staff reassigned. To other duties, we would like for this to go on for as long as possible, because we'd like to be able to use staff for the duties that they've been assigned to, but we. We are handcuffed a little bit with what we're allowed to do with staff paid with special ed funds.
So help me understand then. The numbers there and maybe it's. Maybe it's how many special ed staff are currently supporting childcare? And. And then do they have beyond maybe professional development work? Do they have other work that you would anticipate them being able to do?
Yes.
Directly?
Yeah, so we went into the week and Sarah's here too, I know that we went into the week and we had. We thought that the numbers are going to be much higher for childcare, so we had more. PSAs assigned to childcare to begin with, and we've adjusted since then. Um, but we we have a variety of things that we're working on right now for PSAs to do, but but frankly, it's. Um, there's there's not a lot of direct duties right now that pertain to special ed, so we have some staff development that we're that we've purchased that we're gonna have them participate in. Uh, we actually have them part of some of the distance learning plans that teachers are developing, special ed teachers are developing. That's gonna happen more with our center-based programs for uh, more complex or higher need kids and the way that we are delivering those services at home and using the PSAs. Kind of like we would in the classroom with that. Um, but uh, we and we have them on meal support and we frankly have some just working at home right now or not doing anything at home right now while we figure out what the next steps are, but we had to. Oh, Sarah just piped in on the side, we have twenty one PSA is doing healthcare currently. Um, so we've adjusted as we've gone.
So is there a concern, let's assume we stabilize somewhere around? Fifty, let's let's say that's some magic number that that we stabilize at. For childcare. And I don't know if this is a question for Dave or Jeff. Do we have sufficient other staff? To to support that childcare, if we're expecting teachers who are who are helping this week, and I definitely appreciate that. Um, if we're expecting them to be in a distance learning capacity, can we cover our childcare needs given we don't have? We won't have special ed PSAs.
I I I don't know the answer to whether or not we have additional staff, one one possible solution is to recode. Some of the PSAs to non-special ed funds as well, and then we'd have to do some. Um, personal activity reports or cars to be able to um, time study them to meet compliance standards there too.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the plan right now is related to those other things on community education. That that are listed there, if we. And we don't need board action for this, but it could be board action. If I get the consensus that you're okay cancelling preschool. Because it would be distance learning only and families would be paying for the distance learning and it's not mandated, if we cancel it, we can repurpose all of our licensed. Uh, preschool teachers who are a part of the Ed Minnesota bargaining group, we can repurpose them to childcare where they are would have the skills to do that very well, especially for the long term. Um, we can also repurpose. Other people from community education. Because they're showing up for work, they're willing to do what we ask them to and it's related to what they normally do. And that allows us, as we're carrying that. Those extra costs of community education that are not being funded by the state. We're at least putting them to work. In that childcare. And we're not allowed to let them go unless they don't show up for work, so. Um, our plan for Monday. Is to switch all those people over, we would just have to make the decision not to do preschool registrations. And that's my recommendation and that's what we'll do unless I hear um, a consensus or unless you move it to an action item to go one way or the other on that. So we're anticipating we have enough staff. Where? We're going to be in a difficult situation is if we have um, a spike in our health. Of our own employees where they're willing to come in and they're doing things. But they can't come in because they're ill or they're caring for someone that's ill. Then we're going back to that teacher list and saying, you know, I know you're doing distance learning today. Your lesson is posted, who can cut, I need three people to come in and do childcare for. One half a day and then you go back to different things and then I go to the next four people on there, so we're set up for like. All these scenarios. And um, hopefully. You know, we don't do two months of dipping into the teacher pool and stuff like that, but we just, we just don't know what's gonna happen, but we are ready for next week. And if we get a surge in registrations. We'll reevaluate. But but right now. We 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 have a plan to do without the PSAs, so um, Dave's suggestion of we could recode them, if we recode them, we're creating an expense for us. We're already paying these other people, so it's best to use those people that are. On our bench first. And if we got into a health. Um, predicament with the health of our staff, that is one option, because they don't need all the PSCAs to deliver instruction. They're just. Re- especially at reimbursable, so if we recoded them, they could be another. Step six or seven kind of thing as this goes on.
Okay, yeah, and my understanding too is that we already subsidize special ed with general general ed funds, so I'm I'm not necessarily concerned about it. Hugely from additional expense, only because they're such amazing staff, our PSA is so.
You're correctly, so we're already over the cap, so in some ways, we're already. Spending that money either way.
Um, so I know this is skipping a bullet point, but since um. Uh, Superintendent Peshta had brought it up. I would like to ask Carrie Gore here, her thoughts on um, community ed and, you know, repurposing the employees and. What she's kind of thinking about that from her standpoint.
Thank you, Chair, um, I guess, you know, things have changed so quickly. And what the week started out like was having our licensed teachers come in and prepare for distance learning, and I know that. Up until right now, they've been working really hard on that. Um, and as you know, part of the thing that we've been doing as a district is having teachers reach out to parents and. And so one of the. Most common questions that our staff are getting is about refunds about preschool and so. Um, that just kind of started the ball rolling on. What's gonna happen with preschool, are we gonna have students continue to attend the distance learning? And um, as much as I I would wish and hope for that, I don't know at this point if that's what we would see. And so um, I just want to make sure that we. Uh, find somewhere to place these great employees, they're very, very talented and. And whether it's the distance learning piece or helping out in the childcare, I think that they would do a great job. With helping our childcare students in the e-learning, once we add that next week. Um, and we'll have devices in place so that we can have a good chunk of our day devoted to that. Uh, I just want to make sure that we put them to the best use possible.
Can I ask Carrie an additional question and that's um. And this is just clarifying the way the the point is written, saying we're not accepting new registrations, so. I presume we're talking about the current. School year and are people currently enrolling for this school year? Or we are, is that a a mixed bullet, are we not accepting new registrations for next year right now, because? We can't even figure out, you know, we don't have a good sense of what's happening next week?
I think what Superintendent Peshta is trying to demonstrate there is that. Um, you know, we're not taking new registrations right now, our classes are full, but that. We're not continuing to. See added need for that, so um. We're kind of taking it one step at a time, but that doesn't mean that we're not taking new registrations for next year, we're still doing that.
Okay, thanks, so just to re-summarize, your, our current classes, our classes were full up until the the day that school closed. And. We are accepting registrations for next year. And now it's just a question of. If from the from the calls that your staff have made as they've talked to parents, and I think people have have multiple reasons for sending children to preschool. Do you feel like a distance learning component is? Is meeting that primary need? And would be valuable for those students, or is it is the loss of the of the um, shared experience? Uh, causing people to just want to withdraw?
Well, I think that could be true, um, and then also, you know, we're, everybody's facing a difficult financial situation with all the things that are going on, and so. If you're looking at your expenditures right now and and that one is kind of evident, like, are you gonna keep going with that or is that something that your family needs to decide to discontinue with? I think both of those things are are important, but we do know with preschool, one of the things parents sign their kids up for preschool is is the interaction with other kids and with teachers. So, yeah, both of those things are in play.
Okay, do you know? Uh, ballpark wise, should we ref? What would it cost to refund? Our current preschool enrollment? Say, rolling back to mid-March? I'd take a ballpark number.
That is. Obviously costs more and then the half day options and then there's two days, three days, so it it's hard to give a ballpark option. Um, we did get through quite a bit of March, so I don't know that we're looking to refund for March and I don't. Feel like parents are asking for that, but I do feel like the ask will be April and May. And I'm sorry, I couldn't answer that number more.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine, I I would be interested in knowing that, um. If and when you find it out, in terms of sharing it out with people, and then. Your program ends in May?
Yes, that's correct, ours always ends a week before the regular school year.
Okay, and Superintendent Peshta has a comment?
So I I could have put more in there, but I was trying to keep this on one page, but it's also the new payments. So if we don't refund March, because they got a decent deal in March and they understand why. Why it fell apart at the end. Um, will they pay for April and May? Payments they haven't made yet, knowing that we're only offering distance learning. When people are looking at the expenditures in their household and they decide, we've got to cut on something. Oh, yeah, we want our kid to have a preschool experience, but this really isn't it, so maybe we're. Not gonna pay or expect a refund if we did pay. And maybe we should get in front of that, make sure we're not taking the money that we might feel like we should give it back, at least let's not take the money. Uh, and if we did do distance learning, you know, the work that the teachers have done, maybe because it's already done, they could get that out there as a resource for parents. But. Um, community ed fund four needs to live off of. The minimal state aid that it gets and the revenues that it brings in, so you're looking for fund four to be at least. Neutral and you're hoping that you have a little bit in there to keep investing in your programs. Right now, the revenue dropped off, so the general fund must cover their community ed expenses, it must cover all these employees. And it also must provide childcare under this executive order, so it makes the most sense to not take people's money for something we can't deliver and to switch those people over to. The um, e-learning, or not the e-learning, sure, to the childcare. Some people who would have been doing preschool will now be eligible as emergency workers to get their kids to the childcare and work with that wonderful staff. And those that aren't, maybe we can put the resources online. I guess the the timeliness right now is. Before we take people's money, we should. Recognize what we'd be giving them and ask if if we're comfortable with that. And if we're going to reserve those teachers to do um, distance learning. Communicating that, that's all it is, is distance learning, not that it's bad, but it's. We all know it's not. Not the same experience of what you send you. You know, you might be able to sort of recreate the twelfth graders' experience, but preschool, whole another thing.
And I just want to add that we have turned off the automatic payments right now, just kind of getting in preparation for what we've decided on this issue, so.
I mean, I think that the staff would be fantastic with childcare. I think that that is a great option to move them to, I would be curious, how many staff do we think we need for childcare? How many staff would we be able to bring over from community ed? Uh, what is that number, what are those numbers looking like, do you have an idea?
Um, right now, we are providing before and after care and we're utilizing our school age care staff to do that, because those are the hours that they are used to working. Those are the times of six thirty until eight and from three until six at night. So we're trying to cover all of our school age care with that, and then throughout the day, we have two staff per room, so we're looking at. Um, twenty four, three and three quarter hour shifts. Or I, did I say twenty three, I mean twenty four?
Okay, so twenty four, three and three quarter hour shifts.
That's correct.
Okay. And how many staff do we think we would need for childcare? Because the twenty four, three and three quarter hour shifts is what we could bring over from community ed. Correct?
Uh, no, we don't have that many staff total, um, we would have to utilize other employee groups. To help cover that.
You're referring to the childcare shifts that we anticipate we need to fill, is that twenty four, three and a quarter hour?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
So a total of ninety hours, Carrie?
Yes, at that point, I think the interesting piece that will come into play is Monday when we start the e-learning piece, I I'm not sure what that's gonna do to enrollment. Um, but I think we'll have a good idea come midweek next week.
And then on a related note, the emergency meeting, the board expressed support for free extended care. That is actually a category where we can collect revenue and we're not right now, and so that'll continue to be free until. The board changes that direction, I just want you to know that's out there and. Um, Jen Subert is going to be basically taking all these um, expenses that the district has mandated to do under the executive order. And she's going to track them so that if we ever do get some type of. Uh, sunny day in July, they they decide, hey, you can. Submit your expenses for some type of reimbursement, we'll have all that ready. Right now, they're not even saying. They're not even alluding to that, but we all know it's possible, and so therefore we're tracking it, not only so you know what you paid for the general fund for this. Executive order, but also, uh, we're ready if there is any anything we can recoup. It's just something to think as we proceed that the longer this goes, that um, free extended childcare. Um, you know, will add up and we'll be tracking it. And it's just a conscious decision on the board's part, whether it's free or not, and and it will stay free until until we hear otherwise.
Uh, thanks for for reiterating that, Detective Peshta, I think that's important and I completely support the decision we've made at this point to have that be at no cost. Um, I I would like to acknowledge too that. Community Ed Fund Four really relies on, on the income they receive through their kids' campus and extended day programming, which they're obviously not receiving. And that I would anticipate, um, that there's budgetary impacts of that. There's budgetary impacts not related to the, to the cost of this, but to the loss of revenue. I acknowledge that's going to happen. I'm sure that'll be a point of conversation in future meetings. And I just want to say that that's, that's recognized right now, so that, that we don't need to be surprised when it comes later.
Yeah, but it, it sounds like we have a wonderful way to kind of reassign the, the staff uh, at Tilden and at Community Ed. And I would be supportive of, of moving that when we get to that. To having that go forward.
So right, excuse me, right now, right now, um, that would be my recommendation. You know, in, in today's snapshot, that we shift those, that we don't even bill people for preschool and, and that we make the resources available and that we, um, repurpose those teachers to give us the best childcare experience and the most readiness for, for any surges there. And, um, that, that's a recommendation that I have for the staff. We don't need board action, but if you wanted to make it action for or against, you certainly can do that in the context of this meeting.
All right, do we have any more discussion on that? That's actually a number of the points there that we just covered. So if there's not more, uh, if there's not more discussion on that, we did skip just the one bullet of our K-12 teachers will post their distance learning plans on March twenty-seventh. And that, uh, the equitable distribution of learning technology is a work in progress. And so if there's discussion on that, I know that, um, the leadership team has done a phenomenal job of trying to figure out how to get, um, tech to the kids who need it and which kids are going to need tech. And I know there's a lot of parents in this room and we've gotten the phone calls from the teachers asking if we need, uh, technology, if we have access to wifi. And, um, I've just been very impressed with just how everyone is, is working on this process.
I know there are concerns, um, some concerns that have been voiced, um, to me in terms of how the distribution's going to look. And I know there's been a lot of talk about that. I just think it'd be good that since we're being televised or publicly knows how we're going to manage that. Because the concern is this bull rush, as much as we love everybody in our community, we all know that sometimes parents don't like to follow the rules. Um, so the question becomes distancing. And how do these kids pick up these pieces of technology? You know, and have enough spacing to get their technology and move on? And will they be allowed to go to their lockers to get their personal items as well?
And Superintendent Pesta, I'll let you answer this one.
So, um, during our, um, leadership team meeting today, we went back over this again. I very, uh, recently before the meeting, I did send the high school and the middle school plan so that everybody could see what they communicated out to parents. We had talked about, um, how we do the technology rollout, that we can go slower if we need to, because we want to make sure we have enough staff to do it. And we want to do it with the social distancing and the, and, um, not spreading any infectious disease. And, um, so the middle school and high school plans have already, already been communicated. Um, we, we told them in our meeting today, please make sure that you are, um, really highlighting the steps that we're taking for safety, that safety is number one. Uh, we also understand that people are going to perceive that after Friday at midnight, they, they can't come and get their stuff. It's not true in the executive order, because they're going to an educational institution, they can travel to do that. Um, so we said, highlight that, that it, it isn't this rush to get there by Friday. Um, they're going to use every staff member that they have available to, to literally put out parking cones, to have people spreading out cars, spreading out people. If you look in the, um, comments here, you'll see the high school set up to do theirs. And, and, and high school, same thing, they're really trying to spread people out. We know that the technology and the items have been sitting long enough that they are not contaminated. So we've emphasized have the, the staff wear gloves, because now they're touching it and handing it to somebody. Try to have, you know, people take their own stuff or hand it through at, at a car window or whatever, just like people are doing in the food service industry right now. To really emphasize that, even if part of it is, wow, they're really going overboard. There's no such thing as overboard these days. So really, if, if your staff wants to wear masks, so they're not breathing on people, by all means do it. We have that available to them. But, um, if the board would say, this is going to be a mess, people are going to come rushing in and they're going to violate social distancing and all the CDC guidelines, and they're going to be handed stuff that's going to make the kids ill and whatever. I mean, if the board said, let's not do this Thursday and Friday, based on what the governor said today, then we should talk about that. Otherwise, listening, looking at the executive order and understanding how it applies to what's happening Thursday and Friday. I believe if we take every precaution possible and, um, and really emphasize that, that the only way we can assure an equitable delivery of distance learning is if we give kids who need access to stuff, if we give them the access. If somebody doesn't want to take a computer, because they're afraid they're going to get, I don't know, exposed to something, don't come and get one. Use what you have access to. If, um, a child needs to get their jacket, their medication or whatever, that is being communicated by the buildings. The elementary staff, so this is, this is secondary. The elementary staff is holding back on communicating how to exchange stuff. They know that we have buses that can run stuff around. We have ways of taking things and exchanging with, with families. But they are really talking to their neighbors. They're really planning on, why take a packet of paper from a kid when they could take a, a picture of it with their phone and send it to their teacher? You know, because if we do take paper, we're literally going to let it sit on a shelf for a week before the teacher takes it. And then they'll grade it and they'll put it on a shelf for a week before it goes back together. So we're really trying to get away from paper, but we know that everything is not synchronous, the, uh, distance learning, electronic learning for elementary kids. So they're really emphasizing the big picture and not talking about paper right now. The secondary really needs to, to be equitable, needs to get stuff out for the kids who want it. And they have a plan to do that. And I would say unless you have reservations about that, they just overemphasize the safety. And we know that some people will have concerns and some people may not be polite and follow directions and things like that. We've got a couple of months of dealing with that. And, and we've already received some communication. I'm sure you'll get some more, but if we want to head that off, tonight's the night to do it, because they're scheduled for tomorrow. And if you would, if you would, if you need to access anybody up there to get more.
Um, I do just want to make a clarification to the document we've been reading. Uh, Jen Reichel had posted that teachers will not be posting their distance learning plan. The district will be posting our comprehensive plan. And so the bullet point does say teachers will post it. And so Jen is just making a, a slight correction there, clarifying point. Um, I do think there could be the concern, in my opinion, that parents would do that. But I also think that at this point, everyone's pretty on edge. And I would hope that they recognize that in order for this to be safest for them too, that they would want to come at the time they're supposed to come in order to make this run smoother. I would hope that that's what people are, are planning. I mean, I think we'll always have a couple of people who don't. But I'm not necessarily as concerned in this situation that people are going to rush in, especially since not everyone will be getting computers and things like that, that we're already having a smaller pool there. That's just my opinion though.
Well, that's the reason I wanted to bring it up is for that very reason. By the way, Dr. Pesta, thank you very much. I was very clear, well-articulated, appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that we had put it out there, because again, when things get out there in social media, because I'm sure the, the picture in folks' heads is a bunch of kids hit the middle school at the same time. Hey, how have you been? And next thing you know, you've got seven kids roaming over the locker, you know, you know what I mean? And so those are the kind of visuals they created when, um, people get left their own devices. And I just want to make sure that we address it.
All right, so does anyone else have any discussion on that point? Nope, all right. So then we have finished this bit. Really, oh wait, Becky is raising her hand. And I don't know, maybe you did that before.
Becky, go.
Yeah, that was, that was before. It's all good.
Sorry, if you write it in chat, I will see it pop up. Um, I'm using two different devices here in order to see board book for the agenda and the Zoom screen. Sorry about that. All right, so the next item is loading. Okay, uh, the update on Todd Field parcel proposals.
So I will share that we've been expecting to get a revised lease agreement that is leased to purchase. And that arrived this afternoon. So we had it as a placeholder there on your discussion item. And because it came, we got it to you. So it's a discussion item. I think that they would absolutely understand if you didn't deal with it to your next meeting and have a chance to read through it and whatever, but I wanted to get it in your, in, into your, uh, possession as soon as we had it. Because it was a hot discussion item.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I guess, I guess at this time, I think that's, uh, the issue that, uh, let's give the directors time to review. And they'll get, come and address that at the next meeting.
Does that, everyone else feel the same? Okay, so then we will bring that up at the next meeting so that we all have more time to take a close look at the documents. Thank you for getting them to us right away.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? This, and I did skim this, but I appreciate having time to read it in more detail. This speaks solely to the parking lot portion? That's correct. And we're still not in a place where we're having a real conversation with them about the concession stand portion?
That is ready for the board to approve at any time, if you want to purchase the, that parcel.
Okay.
That hasn't changed. We were
We're trying to do it all together.
So that we don't get too stretched out, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, next up is policy first reads or review. Uh, and so the first policy we're going to look at is the conflict of interest policy two hundred and ten. And so this is, um, ensuring school board members, uh, don't have conflicts of interest.
So some routine this year as we progress, we did get your superintendent memo. Obviously, um, the way we're doing this meeting, I think it was sent to you. And that has some language for making motions, if you want to use that as a guide. It also explains, you know, some of the other stuff about the, uh, committees and there is a committee report. But now for first reads, we just skipped ten when we were trying to get the, the entire two hundred series. So we went back and got that. This is the MSBA version of it. It's just one that we didn't have. Um, and is recommended that two oh six is, uh, was developed. Two oh six A is the addendum to the actual details about how somebody would participate in a board meeting that was worked out by the committee. And that's there as a first read. And then we prioritize unpaid meal charges to explain why it was prioritized in the memo. And soon transportation waiver also. They, they rose to the top as the ones that were most timely to, to get on, they are first reads.
All right, so does anyone have any discussions on these that were posted? Um, I know the policy committee, we spent quite a bit of time trying to work out, especially on, uh, policy two oh six with how to address and really uh, trying to rework the form that we already had and change some of the wording of that in order to at least make people aware of whether people who are speaking, for instance, uh, are members of the school district and things like that, so that as the community watches comments, they can be aware of that as well.
Madam Chair? I move that we accept the first read of the said, uh, documents. Moving them on to the second read at the appropriate time.
Does anyone else have any?
Yeah, if we're taking them as a group, I have a, I have a little bit of question about unpaid meal charges. I understand the, the, the state, uh, directive on this, I think. And the, how this has changed over the last couple of years. I certainly don't think we've been in that, the situation that the state is concerned about. But I do know that, um, some of our biggest challenges in the past are not families that are not, uh, financially able to maintain their account. But there may be, uh, people that feel that, uh, a meal should be included in their child's education and are choosing not to pay. And we're running up significant hundreds and hundreds of dollars in negative accounts. Is there any, are we just accepting that that's going to happen? And how does, how do we make the food, food service whole in that, in that case? And then is, do you anticipate any linkage between being, being squared up as a family on your meal accounts with uh, choosing to participate in things like prom or ego bluff or purchasing earbuds, making those types of payments? Is there a, is there a level of obligation to be square in one thing? Prior to the other happening?
In my reading, looking at the first one, uh, your first question about making them square, it looked like at the end of the policy, there was the option for the school district to pursue collections. Now, again, that's not something that comes for free.
Yeah, I saw that as well. And I also saw in the policy committee notes, which are further on in the agenda, that there was a consideration of approaching a, a community fund, asking to square people up that are, have accounts, which are greater than a certain dollar value. And that also isn't addressed in the policy. I mean, that, that approaching a uh, an angel-type fund and asking to get even, isn't addressed in the policy. It may end up being a practice. Yeah, I know we've, we had that conversation years ago, Scott, the first time we took a run at this policy. And, and it, it is a significant, it is a notable expense to, to
Right.
Put somebody into collections to try and, and recoup a few hundred dollars. And again, it's not that people are not finding, are not able to pay. It's the, those people I think we can work with and we can provide them help getting through the forms and all that. It's the the people that are choosing not to.
Correct.
So this is a updated language that Michael Manning and Jen Subert were working on before I got here. And we began to collaborate on it, because we wanted to make sure that not only were we complying with the, the updated language, that is required by the state right now about avoiding lunch shaming. We also wanted to make sure that students, um, always had access to the same meal, no matter what their case was, that we dealt with the parents on the account. And looking at data specifically, looking at the specific Hastings data, it appeared that we had ten thousand dollars of unpaid lunch, um, balances that was covered by the Angel Fund. And then there was eighteen thousand that were uncovered, that would have to be absorbed by the general fund. And as districts tried to minimize that part that has to be absorbed by the general fund. And also, um, when we've used up the whole Angel Fund, that means we want to do something about that, so that there's more reserve in the Angel Fund. So one way of doing that is looking at our data and see who is actually eating up that twenty-eight thousand dollars. And far and away, it was accounts that were greater than fifty dollars in the hole. And when you deal with the family like that, you're then going to have their child continue to get a meal, but you're going to address it and possibly in collections. The proactive approach of a principal, working with the family to find out what the family needs. Do they need connection with social services? Do they need, um, the whole, um, broad width of the things that can be provided to help a family with their meal security? We want to do that early, because once it's past fifty, we almost never get those and they'll end up going to collections. So now the parents being held accountable, um, we're going to get a fraction of the amount collected, because you don't get it all, even if you're successful. And, and, um, we're going to continue to feed, feed the child. So by targeting on those fifty and greater, um, balances, they really believe that they could keep it within just the Angel Fund territory. But how do we get rid of the eighteen thousand? And that's where, um, we are approaching, um, a, a grant who, um, would consider that we will not continuously do that for you. Who would consider that we will not continuously do that for you. We're not your angel fund. But if you've got a new policy that really helps kids. And and you can allow the principals to work with people when they first go negative. Instead of when they're already fifty and you're not going to get it back and really help support the community. Um, we're we're interested in looking at your your request to do it on a one time basis. So if we are able to get that, we're back down to trying for next year to keep our unpaid balances within the angel fund range. By being proactive immediately when it goes below. And then the whole concept, no student ever has a tray taken away. No student ever gets a different lunch. Even though they're both meet the nutrition guidelines and they cost about the same. You know, but we're identifying you as the cheese sandwich when everybody else had a burrito because. That's our less our our notice to you. The notice goes to the parents, not to the kid. The kid just gets the same meal. And we get proactive on that. So that's what the heart of this unpaid balance um. Policy update is for. Part of it is mandated that we change some language. A part is really what Michael and Jen had been working on. Jen does want to contribute anything, I'll turn off my mic.
I also wanted to add that when you had talked about yearbooks or the eagle bluff trip that. Again, it it goes back to the idea that. This should be the parent's debt and we shouldn't take that out on the kids who are minors. This is their parents' responsibility. And so putting that responsibility on the parents rather than punishing the kids for their parents not paying their fund. Is really what the policy committee talked about, and that's how we wanted to to move it forward.
I should add that one of the most important things in working with the families right away is saying. You need to apply for free reduced price lunch to see if you qualify. If you don't, we still have to work with you, but. We want to eliminate the people who are racking up lunch balances because they didn't even apply for something that they're eligible for. And so that's one way. Of that early proactive type stuff. There are things that are, it's illegal to tie unpaid lunch balance to anything to do with the education. The extras potentially could. But as as Director Waits explained, that's not the intent of this to to attach those. That it's about that proactive, let's support your family. And yes, if you go past fifty. And you're not working with us, it will go to collections and that's that's adult responsibility.
Madam Chair.
As I say, it looks like Jen's.
Just one second on Director Pendle first.
I think that, uh, you know, how we address this is. Kind of a issue, but and now that since the legislature is only supposed to be going to deal with. The current emergency issues. That this was on their legislative agenda to deal with this year and provide some. As, you know, this, this item is going to come back to us next year. And I think that's probably the way to look at it moving forward as far as that goes. Is, you know, work through the best we can for this uh, year. And realizing that when the legislature meets next year, this topic and this policy will come back. That we'll have to readdress.
Yeah, and that makes sense. And I'd be interested, I see, I'd be interested in what Jen's, just to hear a little bit from Jen Subert on this. Um, and again, I know when we took this on a few years ago, our biggest challenge is not. The people that would slide under and not fill out their forms because I think we've always been quite proactive about. Uh, engaging people. It's been. The people choosing, the families choosing not to. To support um, the students lunch. And that's, that's been a challenge and and I'm not sure that that's a question that's solved with the policy. I suspect it's not. I would, should we get to implementation on this? I'd be interested to hear at like an end of year report of. What it costs us to undertake collections versus what we receive. And if we see any change in the in the trend. Of people staying in compliance.
I'm curious as well about page four, uh, section four, item C and D seem to be. Contradicting each other the way that they're written. So item C says. That negative balances of more than a hundred dollars not paid. Prior to the end of the school year will be turned over to the superintendent or the superintendent's designee for collection. Collection options may include but are not limited to use of collection agencies, claims in conciliation court. Or any other legal method permitted by law. An item D says the school district may not enlist the insistence of non-school district employees such as volunteers. To engage in debt collection efforts. So how can I engage a collection agency? Because they're non-school district employees to engage in collection efforts. So I think we need some clarification on this one.
But that is MSBA language and it's based on those cross references on there below. Essentially, what I believe it's saying is that. If they're trying to keep volunteers out of it into the those situations that a professional firm can be used. But to bring in people who are not our. Staff who normally work with with foods and have access to, it's primarily about free and reduced price lunch eligibility, which is private data. And also the lunch account balances are are private data. So you're making sure that other people, other than a very select handful of people, which it's it's contained with right now, don't get involved. Because somebody could say, well, this is, we need somebody to make calls or we need somebody to send out memos or whatever. Let's get some volunteers. A collection agency would be a professional agency. And so we didn't write that language. That's from the MSBA template. And I'm not against making it clear. I'm open to suggestions, but when we change it, we have to make sure we're not changing anything that's referenced in the cross reference in the bottom.
I personally thought it was relatively clear. Honestly, I I kind of got it. I I knew where they were going with it. My fear is that if we start messing with it, we may muddy it more.
And I would just add that we purposely put in some additional levels of communication. In on that first page there, there's some, they'll get phone calls, they'll receive a letter. At some point, we're going to be asking building level principals to have communication. And then if it does go to commu- or to collections, they just hold back a certain percentage. It doesn't actually cost us anything. So anything that they collect on. Um, the collection agency holds back some money. So it's not really an additional cost to the district.
Thank you for clarifying that. Does anyone else have any points that they would need clarified? Okay, so then at this point, it appears that. Oh, alright, just a second.
Um, I I just have a question on the next one and knowing Brian has found himself in the same situation as I have, and this is on the the transportation waiver. Um, the student transportation waiver, policy seven ten A. Um, I think it's a terrific idea, uh, if not necessary for us to get a waiver in place, given that. Specifically, we expect hockey players to drive themselves to the arena. And uh, and get ready for practice. That's never provided. That needs to be clear. My question is. Or concern is alignment between the statute for things when we are as a district providing transportation. So maybe two an away game and then a, uh, in this case, or what its practice has been in the past. Is you, a parent may be taking a player. When transportation will be provided back and you and I, you know, you ask twenty four hours in advance. It has to be currently, it has to be a parent or a guardian. There were two places where the policy, and I don't have the exact citation, but two places where the policy, I think, does not. Currently comply with our athletic guidance, which is. You ask the coach to do the pickup as opposed to currently, we ask you get the that waiver request is through the AD. And then they pass it on to the coach. And I feel like that would be better practice to keep those requests one to a minimum and two. A uniform practice across all activities. And then, and I don't know the state statute well enough, could our current, the way the waiver is written, any adult could be. Identified as the driver. And I I'm not sure. I think the statute might require us that it be a parent or guardian. So, you know, when you, when you and Judy are both driving up to get kids from baseball games, you have to both go drive your own kid. That's been the practice in the past. And I, in this, this waiver, it looked like it says authorized driver. It almost sounded like I could authorize Brian to drive my child. And I think that might not be in compliance with the. The statute. So that's just a clarifying question for when we get to second reading. Let's make, I would like us to have the AD, the athletic director granting the waiver and then communicating it to the coach. And then making, just being clear on if it has to be a parent guardian as the authorized driver, if it can just be an authorized adult driver.
I want to just make sure I'm concurring with Lisa on that, just knowing that we've experienced the same thing. And I think I would say that we're both comfortable with the way that's done. The athletic director has to approve it, but it's definitely only that parent of that child. So I couldn't take Lisa's child along with my son. I can only take my son and that's a very absolute rule that we've always had.
Yep, Superintendent Pasha.
So I'm not sure if the committee meeting, the committee, the policy committee will meet before the next meeting or not. Uh, for the next regular board meeting or not. Um, just to clarify how this document came together, it was drawn up by. A school attorney who is also one of our school attorneys. He just did it with me in a different district. And then our activities director adapted it to match what what would be a Hastings customized version of it. When it comes to that authorized driver, the the reason the attorney drew that up was based on this, the the new Supreme Court case that the precedent is set. And so he did it to comply with that. Doesn't mean that Hastings can't dial it in, you know, to match the Hastings. It it just has to be. You're making it more restrictive, which is okay. You couldn't expand it beyond what they've got. The way that they have written it without putting yourself in legal jeopardy, but you could tighten it up because it's the cust- the customized version for Hastings. And so at a minimum, we could talk to Trent about trying to reconcile that because anything that isn't, wasn't written by the attorney was. Trent customizing it for Hastings and we just need to sync up how Trent is understanding that and and what board is giving some guidance on. And have that ready for the next one. And if necessary, we can have them. You know, provide a little explanation or whatever for the next, for the next read.
Yeah, I think that would be great. And I definitely agree with Brian that that our practice of it, it is that child or student's parent or guardian is the driver. I would prefer that tighter control. I I, as a parent, it would occasionally be convenient for a different parent to drive my child, but. Given the, given where the statute arose from and the reasons that it arose, I feel confident, I feel comfortable having it be more constrained here in Hastings.
I'm nodding, but I agree.
Okay, so just tightening that up for the second reading at the next board meeting. Otherwise, it seems ready to go then.
I missed the part in here. Did you say there was a part in here about the coach driving the athlete?
No, there's not a part about the coach driving. The the part in here is that the parent would. Uh, make a written request of the coach to drive the child. And my understanding of current practice is that the parent makes the request of the athletic director. To drive a child and they in turn confirm it with the coach. And my my expectation is that it, my understanding is that it's only done in very unique circumstances. And it's usually related to the conflict being. A a very uncommon family event or um, conflict with another school activity.
Exactly. I'll give you an example, Scott. So there's a choir concert. And the JV and the kids on the JV team, they got to stay with the varsity bus. Well, that would be a unique situation where you contact the athletic director copying the coach. And you do it twenty four hours out. So you have written approval to come get that child and the coach will release them to you, that kind of thing. But it was definitely unique situations. It wasn't just, hey, I just want to go come grab my kid. You got to have a pretty good reason.
Yep, understood. The reason I was asking about the coaches that that would raise a different level of. Supervision and athlete protection. So, but and and that's, I I was, I was looking through this and I was like, I didn't see that in there anywhere. So I just wanted to make sure I, that it wasn't in there. So that's good.
Superintendent Pasha.
The point of clarification, because we did just recently put in a policy on developing policies. So when they go to the second read, the policy requires that they have a minimum of two, but you can go on to five, six till you get it right. You know, I mean, you're not like have to act next time, just keep on working on it.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, so now that we've gone through those, we're on to administrative reports. So first up is the superintendent.
Alright, so many of the things that I might be reporting on are already built into the agenda. There's one thing just to make the board aware of. That we have a HR calendar. The district always has had an HR calendar. We've. Um, examined it as we've come together here in January and tried to be very intentional. And sticking to the calendar and working through our. Our teacher development evaluation plan to give the district the best opportunity to be competitive in a market. And although everything is upside down right now, these contracts. For teachers are still following the same statutes and we still need people for next year. So. Our leadership team and our evaluators that evaluate teachers have agreed that. Um, March twenty sixth, which is tomorrow, is the day that they will notify any probationary staff that will not be renewed. And they will be very clear that this has nothing to do with what they did in the last week or how happy they were about. Distance learning or anything else like that, that it's completely, it's it's based on our collaborative. Ed Minnesota and District Teacher Development Evaluation Policy. These decisions were made over the course of an entire year. If not longer and that we follow that process according to the statute, according to our TDD plan. And that it really, even in these distressing times, it doesn't make sense to drag it out any further. So that they will be notifying tomorrow, they have a plan for how to do that. And um, you will get those names on a consent agenda where it's crystal clear who's moving forward and who's not. And they won't be um, discussed publicly, other than they're a part of the consent agenda that people will see. And you know, by statute, a probationary teacher does have the option to have a hearing to question why they're being dismissed. But in this case, um, they're probationary and it's a decision based on our TD and E plan. Just Monday to have a heads up on that, we know that when it gets. I'll use the term sloppy for any reason. Then you have issues in interpreting and you have different opinions of the statutes and everything. Keeping this tight even in this time. Is the best thing for the district and for everybody involved. And so they're proceeding to move forward with that and you'll be, um, you'll be notified. The consent agenda, you'll see that, we'll get that out to you ahead of time. So you can ask questions before it ever comes to the board meeting like. Can I get some background on the situation?
Okay. Building construction fund project update. Yep, I think that'll be Jen. She's still.
Sorry, I am still here. Okay, so. I don't, I mean, the the document is in there. I don't know if you guys have questions or not. It's updated through the end of February.
Jen, I didn't have any questions, but just thank you for pulling it out that that just really helped me sit down and and. See it separately. And I think it's important for the community to watch the entirety of our bond work. Go forward. So for, so thanks for developing it and putting it in a, in a clarifying place in the agenda for for all of us.
Sure.
Okay, yes, thank you for doing this for us to keep us updated. So student enrollment snapshot.
Yeah, we're just going to put them in every month so that.
Okay.
The board is in tune. Yeah, we're just going to put them in every month so that the board is in tune.
Okay, so we won't necessarily discuss them every month, but the board does have them and you can access them on Board Book. So the school board committee reports will go through. We've had a number of committee meetings since the last, since the last regular board meeting and those summaries are in here. Now, a lot of this is also built into the agenda, such as what the policy committee was working on. That's built into the agenda. The facilities committee, that's also built into the agenda, but the full reports are on Board Book. And if anyone wants to talk about them, policy committees first, I think we've already kind of covered what the policy committee did. If you look up the policy committee report, it does say, you know, some of the next policies that would be coming up down the road that we would be looking at. Otherwise, it's just a summary of the things that we've already spoken about tonight. Is there any more discussion about the policy committee? Okay. Then the next committee meeting with self-funded insurance. So if you have anything to share.
I think we have, this is an interesting one where the, the policy questions always all came before this report and the self-funded insurance ones all come after this report. So I think they're covered in, they will be covered in the end portion of our agenda tonight.
All right. And so then next is the facilities committee report, and we actually met twice in between the last regular board meeting and this meeting in order to really clarify specifically talking about the additional parking lot that we would like to build by the athletic fields at the high school. And so the summary of those is in, is in Board Book, but we'll also be making some votes on that later. All right. Joint powers. Anything substantive you would like to share beyond what's posted to Board Book? All right. So if you would like to see joint powers, that is also posted. So at this point, we'll move on to action items. And so first is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I moved the, uh, moved the consent agenda.
Second, second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposing sign? Motion carries. All right. So the next action item is specifications for the high school activities parking lot. So I would, one of the other facilities committee members like to talk about this, their superintendent Pasha. Otherwise.
The information is included in Board Book. Basically, as we looked at the information and the need, we tried to address that we wanted to have some adequate space there. And we put in a number and said, okay, what was the value that we could get for this number? And we did include part of the trail additions that we had reviewed and discussed with the athletic director and administration. And so we looked at and felt that it was important to go to Wold with the concurrence of the board, that the dollar value that was written in there, that we moved that process along and let that out for bid.
And so we did recognize that we would need to increase. Or we're expecting that we need to increase, but we did not want to increase to the initial estimate that Wold was expecting us to need to. That being said, we also recognize that right now, the economy, we have no idea what it's doing. And so we're not really sure what this bid is going to come in at. And if we really have a good estimate of it. And so working with other leadership such as Trent Hanson and Mike Johnson, we talked about which pads were most important and weighing the, the desire for additional parking spaces versus additional pads and where to kind of find that, that happy balance. And so, as I said, we had met twice to kind of come up with this and figure out the best option.
So I see that it's a bid for the Batuminas surface, so a paved surface on this. So what, what was the deciding factor between that and a gravel lot?
So there were a number of factors, one being with a gravel lot, even if you say it's for a hundred spaces, you're not actually going to get a hundred spaces since there's not really markings on that. So that was one. Another one is we talked about, one of the major needs for this parking lot was accessibility and safety and gravel is not as accessible as paved, especially if it's after rain and we're talking about muddy gravel. And then we talked about on windy days, especially up there, there's a lot of wind up there. And if the gravel is dry and then you have the gravel blowing and, and things like that. And so those were kind of the three factors that had speared us away from gravel. Superintendent Pasha.
And one other thing that the committee talked about was without the curb and gutter, people may take it upon themselves to park wherever they feel they need to go to, which is defeating the purpose of an organized parking lot.
Yeah, right.
My train of thought slipped for a second. I'm sorry. It's also important to note that if someone is wheelchair bound or something walker, that type of thing, gravel gets very hard to negotiate. So I think it's important to look at it from that perspective as well. I think that's important as well. I did have another question though. It says according to that report that it's field 10. This has always been a point of confusion for me. We're doing field selection and things like that for different sports. So is that a change in what field, what used to be field nine, the former field nine? Cause I thought this was going to be built in the field nine space. But I've never been clear on these numbers. It seems to change all the time. So I'm not quite clear on what field 10 is. Field 10, it was related in the, in the picture that we had last time. If you're heading west on what would be Featherstone Road, okay? And it's a gravel portion of Featherstone Road. You'll drive by all the fields and then there is at the very end of our fields before we get to private property, there is an entrance there. Okay, where, where oftentimes coaches and such, if they have a lot of equipment that they need to haul in to like the storage shed or whatever, they can access it there. Back from that. So, so that entrance, that is what I understand to be field nine. Back east from that, the next field where then that, that comes with a hill even further east of it, that I believe is field 10. And that's where I understood this parking lot to be going. So there will be a new entrance to the parking lot, not two entrances. Okay. Okay, but, but the, but the, the current, it's, it's labeled as no vehicles, but the current, what would be entrance, you know, where there's an actual fill in of the ditch and stuff that you can come through would not be utilized to access this field. Is that true? So what you're just.
That's, when the covert is in there, what, I guess we're getting some feedback a little bit here. The, where Scott was talking about, this is east of there. Oh, 200 yards, maybe something like that, Scott.
Well, that's, I mean, I think this is probably, probably not necessarily worry about right now, but what you just described to me, Scott, according to my Parks Reg meeting a couple of weeks ago is field nine. I just want to make sure we're, this parking lots go away.
So.
Well. I understand. I was sitting in there though with people from school different too, and they seem to call it nine too. So it's, it's X's and O's, but.
So if you were to go, so while you guys were chatting, I went on Hastings Athletics. And if you go under field map, it is currently called field nine. So you open the field map and it's, it, the furthest west is 10 and then nine is nine. And that's where the, that one, one of the, I think it's a softball field. And then you go down the hill and it's eight and then you go further down the hill and it's, it's the pond. So I, I don't know if there's going to anticipate it to be a renumbering, but it's in the place that it was intended to be in the 2017 facilities report. So maybe the confusion about what field number it is, but it's in the exact same place that it was discussed to be in the 2017 community facilities group.
I think it turned out that, where the location is there, that it, we had, okay, here we go. But the, it was laid out, the two different presentations from Wold showed different information, or at least the numbers of the information was different.
Thank you. So I've shared, I've shared my screen. So this is a simple Google map of the, of the area. So this, where my most pointer is, this is the property line. This is the small driveway I was referring to. That is sometimes utilized to access some of the further fields when they have big, heavy equipment to haul, et cetera. This is the area where the parking, this is the field that will be disrupted, I should say. So whatever, whatever field that is, this is that there's actually a hill here. Okay. So this is a higher, higher elevation. This is a lower elevation. So this is where the parking lot will be with, with entrances. So whatever number that is. Yep, that's what I thought.
Superintendent Pasha.
So, um, map that we looked at at the committee meeting that Wold presented with the update, it identified it as field 10. We can get it renumbered as long as everybody agrees where, where it was. But I took it straight from world and maybe they've been on the, the mis, the misnumbering of it all along, but I think everybody understands which field it get will no longer be used for activities.
Yeah. And I think that's a good idea for all the reasons that you listed to go with a paved surface. I was hoping, I, I, I know that we had talked about it last time. I received some feedback from the community saying, hey, I, I hope you really do consider for all the reasons that you listed about accessibility especially. So I just was curious where that conversation went. So awesome.
And so it just meant that we cut down the, the size of the lot and then we got a little more creative with the pads and we talked to the district leadership a bit more to see which pads were actually needed. But then we'll see what the bid comes in it. But that's our recommendation.
Yeah. And we have to remember too, that even though there's only 98 spots, okay, in that, in that lot, you have for, for what would be, from what I've seen, the highest use of the field is during Little Raider football games. So that's either a weekday night or a Saturday morning. You have the, for some of the games, it's actually closer to park at the, by the water tower and the, the, the tennis court lot than it would be to park over there. So they split amongst this. So I think 98 spots should get us to the point where we don't have people parking out on the road anymore. And we don't have our community members climbing through a ditch to get to the fields.
Yeah. And Trent, Trent Hanson, cause this was a, you know, we, we was a trade off conversation at the end of the day, the amount of paths and the size of the lot, Batuminas versus gravel. And Trent said really a hundred was his goal number. And he felt that would resolve it. And in terms of the paths that are added, and this is, I think, one of the most I will turn out to be the most used portion of this work is a paved path between the tennis courts and Grossman Field, the baseball field, which is an area that's heavily traversed, heavily traversed, a very muddy and very irregular and, and having a path there is going to really increase the appeal of the tennis court parking as well as offset the people on the other side. So I think we managed to meet Trent's goal of, of a hundred. I feel very, very comfortable with Batuminas that, that was a far and away preference for mine. And really in the high use areas, give a paved path to resolve some of the accessibility. And then sort of poor weather condition accessibility for everyone.
Right. So I think that about covers it. Is there any more discussion or questions about it? Otherwise, we can make a motion to request the bids.
So moved.
I would. Would you guys accept a friendly modification to change current field 10 to current field nine? Cause that's in alignment with what's on the Hastings High School facilities map. I mean, I know we all understand it, but it just aligns to the, to our other mapping.
Maybe it's smarter to have, you know, whoever's in charge of the fields, A D and let them correct that and then pass that out. So that everything is aligned correctly.
The, the recommended motion includes field 10. I, I would feel comfortable saying if the lot, the lot will, will be placed in accordance with the 2017 facilities committee recommendation or report and then just remove the number.
I agree.
Adoption.
Okay. So is there any more discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor of, you know, accepting or putting out a request for bids for the 98 stall Batuminas surface lot at the location in accordance with the 2017 facilities report. All right. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Oppose same sign? All right, motion carries. So next we have self-funded insurance. And so we can have some discussion after we get the motion on the board, which I forgot last time. We should get the motion in the second first. I'm learning. So do we have a motion to approve preferred one as the self-funded insurance provider?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Oppose same sign? All right, motion carries. So next up would be a motion to approve increasing the premium for self-funded health insurance by 2% for the 2020, 2021 school year. A lot of 20s.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to address this one. So for, for those who look at our self-funded health insurance balance that we have, so we, we strive to operate at a 40% reserve. Okay, so 40% of whatever our healthcare would be for the upcoming year. So currently, that's a, a, a bit over $7 million. We are over that amount with our fund balance, which is great news. It means that since we have started our self-funded health insurance, that it's been run responsibly. We've had good claims experience, you know, it's, it's been very successful. With that said, we have seen over the past two years that that claims experience is normalizing. So we've seen double digit increases last year and the year prior. And this year it's looking like we, we will have more of the same. So what that means is that for this year, for the current school year, what we had anticipated to be a slight increase in the fund balance may actually turn out to be that we're going to break even. So what, what the district and our staff is putting in is going to be either at or maybe even a little bit below, or maybe a little bit above, depending on how things finish up that, that amount. So we're almost right on. So the question that people ask, and I would certainly ask would be, well, if we have this fund balance and we're above our 40%, why aren't we just taking another zero next year and just eat up some of the fund balance? why aren't we just taking another zero next year and just eat up some of the fund balance? And it really comes down to the rate at which claims are going up is such that we don't, i- if we're at, if you imagine that we're climbing up a hill and we're at the top of the hill now, we, huh, huh, I'll use current language. We want to flatten that curve. Okay? I think everybody can understand that now. Uh, we, we want to flatten that curve. So we don't want our fund balance to drop by a large amount because if we dip into the fund balance, let's say we would dip into the fund balance next year, $700,000 to, to cover this. Well, that means that the year after we're automatically $700,000 over budget plus whatever our premiums went up the next year. So now we have the $700,000 loss in year one. Year two, we automatically have $700,000 loss and probably another five to $700,000 on top of that. So you can see where this quickly can accelerate into a position where we would be looking at double digit increases for the district and our staff. And nobody wants to do that. So with the advisement of, of the company that, that we work with, on these matters, they recommended 2%. And that is to help flatten that curve a little bit. We'll see what our claims experience is, how it finishes up next this year, what that looks like next year. But just to set the stage, their, their modeling shows 2% this year, five to seven next year, five to seven the year after that. And even with that, we would be cutting into our fund balance. Okay. And, and the fund balance, not only are we taking it off the top, okay? But every, every dollar that we take out reduces our fund balance, but our 40% this year, it's 7.2 million. Next year it's 7.6 million. Well, 40% of 7.6 is a larger number. The year after that, it's projected to be over eight million. Well, seven percent, 40% of that is a larger number. So our fund, our 40% fund balance requirement keeps increasing. And if we're taking off the top, that just accelerates how quickly those two lines would meet. So 2% is a conservative estimate for this coming year. We all, we all agreed that this was the responsible way to go. Uh, but I'm just setting the stage for what we're looking at in coming years. If our claims experience continues to be the same.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions about that or any more discussion? All right. Well, then in that case, uh, all those in favor of approving increasing the premium by 2%? Say aye. Oppose, same sign? Right. Motion carries. So next up is a motion to approve the stop loss coverage from preferred one with no increase um, for the 2020, 2021 school year.
So second.
All right. And do we have any discussion on that?
Just a quick update to let people know what this means. So our, our stop loss coverage, the, our, our, our provider preferred one would cover claims up to the $200,000 level. Okay. So single, single person, single claim, $200,000. Once it hits that point, it goes to a secondary insurance that would pay the remainder. Okay. So for some, some diagnoses, I mean, this can, you can hit that $200,000 quite quickly. This is, this is a premium that we pay for that secondary insurance. And we can set it at various levels. So we had talked about what does this look like if we change it to 225,000 or 250,000 dollars? Before we go to that stop loss. Okay. So then, then it's a balancing act between, well, wait a minute, that's going against our primary insurance. Our secondary insurance may go down a little bit. So where we're at right now and with the negotiations that we had take place with these companies, we were able to keep it the same for this year, which was a huge win because 15 to 30, 40% is not unheard of. So this was a, this was a, a nice surprise.
Great. Is there any more discussion? All right. So, um, all those in favor of approving the stopless coverage from preferred one with no increase for the 2020, 2021 school year? Say aye. Oppose, same sign? All right. Motion carries. Next up is a motion to approve the fixed fee bid from preferred one for the 2020, 2021 school year with no increase.
So move.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this item?
Again, just to explain what this is, this is a per, per belly button insured fee that we are paying. It, you can approach this two different ways. We are approaching it where we're taking the prescription rebates. So every time you go in, you go in for, you know, whatever, wha- whatever prescription, there will be a small amount that comes back from the pharmaceutical company that then gets passed along to us. We can do that, which in our modeling shows that it would be slightly beneficial for our district. So we did that this year, that, that was the first year and we believe it will be slightly beneficial over the other option, which is forget about the rebates and pay a lower per employee fee. So we, we pay the higher, pay the higher fee, get the rebates versus pay the lower fee, let preferred one keep the rebates. Again, just with the, with the help of the company that we work with, they ran the modeling on it based on our prescription history. And it looked like it was going to be a favorable deal for us. I mean, it's not tons of money, but it's tens of thousands. So it's worth it.
Great. Thank you. Is there any more discussion or any questions? All right. And so all those in favor of approving the fixed fee bid from preferred one for the 2020, 2021 school year with no increase? Say aye. Oppose, same sign? All right. Motion carries. So last up in the self-funded action item is a motion to approve increasing the premium for self-funded dental insurance by zero percent for the 2020, 2021 and 2021, 2022 school year. Seriously, this is like a tongue twister here. All right. Is there any discussion?
Again, our dent, our dental is self-funded. It's very healthy. So for those staff covered by this, please make sure you're going to the dentist once we get out of, well, I had did disappointment that, that got blown out of the water. So, uh,
Okay. So any more questions or discussion? All right. So, um, all those in favor of approving increasing the premium for self-funded dental insurance by zero percent? Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. All right. So next up is the revised 2020, 2021, uh, academic calendar. And so this would be amended to reflect the first day for fifth grade and ninth graders being August 31st and for other grades to start on September 1st. Do we have, uh, motions?
So moved.
Okay. And discussion?
I'm still not convinced we have the right calendar attached. So I should be looking at August 30th. And it says, right now, the one that's attached says first day grades one through five, August 30th, which is 31st, excuse me, which is Monday. And I think what it should say is one through four, five and nine. I, I completely agree with the intent. I absolutely positively want fifth grade to have that first day of the building. I just, I'm not sure we have the right calendar attached right now.
That's true. Cause we wanted the fifth grade to be on the school. Cause we didn't have the rate of prep. So we wanted six.
So six through eight.
Start on the first, correct?
That's what I think.
Yes. So yes, we, it is not the correct.
Yeah. So the calendar that's attached does not pull sixth, seventh and eighth grade out to start the same day as grades 10 through 12.
Right. So it's the fourth line item there where it says August 31st, first day grades one through nine. It should read first day grades five and nine. And then September one would be first day grades. K through 12, or
Yeah, it should be one through, one through four. One through five, comma nine.
Six through eight, K through, or 10 through 12 and K.
There you go.
Um, so Jen, Jen Rieckel has just asked, it looks like you have the 2021, 22 calendar. And I'm just, based on this, it does say that it's the 2020, 2021 calendar. Um, it's just that the, it wasn't attached with the changes to be made.
She may be looking at the next item, which is item either proposed 2021, 22 school year calendar.
Maybe.
Yeah. So for item.
I think you might be looking at the next act or the next item. So you want to go back one, one section to the?
Yeah. She said, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah. So yeah, Becky's, Rebecca, uh, Becky Garcia says, yep, it's wrong. It's the wrong attachment. And it's, you know, we had that interim discussion with, with the middle school that was going to occur at the last act, action item or at the last, uh, regular board meeting. So I think we just, just could, I think we all understand what the intent is.
Yep. I think so too.
Right. So, so to be clear, the intent here is that we are only doing the fifth grade orientation day for the calendar year 2020, 2021.
Correct. Cause we normally have radar prep.
Correct. So for the following year, 2021, 2022, we would go back to the opportunity to have radar prep.
Correct. Yep. So this would just be a one, a one year, uh, switch. Yep. Due to the construction going on at the middle school. All right. Yeah. Superintendent Pasha.
So neither Becky nor I were a part of the calendar development, everything. And so they attempted to capture your discussion from last week. Obviously there's still an error in there. I think your choices are to approve this with the intent that we're going to go back and fix it or we let the middle school know they could proceed, but we're going to come back and actually approve the, the corrected calendar next month, whichever you prefer.
I mean, I personally am okay with approving it with the intent to fix it since we did cover that. But if someone feels strongly against that, then we can wait until next month.
I thought we told the middle school when they were there that we approved it. We had approved that. Yep. So I'm okay with the intent of approving with the intent of that changes.
Okay. Right. That sounds good. So is there any more discussion or questions? All right. So then looking for a motion to approve the revised 2020, 2021 calendar to include a fifth grade orientation day on August 31st with the intent of this being reflected in the calendar.
That's already happened.
So all those in favor? All right. Motion carries. All right. Um, so the proposed 2021, 2022 school year calendar master draft is also up. So if we have any discussion around that, we can see on this calendar that it has, that there would not be that, uh, day for the fifth graders.
I'd also like to point out, and maybe we, I, I could point out during discussion that, that when we get to 21, 22 calendar, we have half days back in the, back in the calendar again. And that's because in our current master agreement with the teachers, which extends through the end of 21, we, we removed them and made those, made, gave some additional workshop time in, in an MOU. I still feel like there was, that was understood that there's going to be some conversation about how to accommodate workshop time in a different way, and maybe even staff development time in a different way. In future calendars, but it just wasn't something we could take out in negotiations. So even if, a- and I would approve of this calendar, but I, I still feel like as a district, when we get time, we should be doing a, an evaluation of what's the right way to accommodate, what's an, what's an interesting or different way to consider accommodating workshop and potentially staff development um, around, at least my personal desire to not have half days. But still, still needing to maintain contact days.
I had attended the staff development meeting or with the teachers and, uh, Jen. And they had talked about, had made some suggestions that we can discuss at a later time about, um, alternating start times and see what other districts do. So that's something that we can look into or try and figure out different ways. But yeah, definitely when we have time to look at different ideas for them.
Yeah. I know. And we've got a lot on our plate, but, but just like, no, but just like we're doing student, student supports. We need to get a leadership team. And I know I've said calendar committee in the past, but I'm comfortable with it not being that group, but somebody needs to be designated to sort of dive into this.
So I'd also like to have it. I'm sorry Lisa, I'd also like to have it somewhere like in the minutes or something that maybe one of the things we look at is, and I don't know how this works per the contract, but maybe the second half of that second day of conferences could become a half day of some type of workshop. One reason I'm throwing it out there is because it seems like you get to the second half of the conference days and there's very little going on and a lot of downtime for teachers. They could be doing something else. We could readjust that scheduling a little bit.
I think you're a very brave man to say that, given that you're going to go home to a teacher and talk about how little, how all this free time she has on the second half of a conference day, but that's for you. And you're going to be trapped in that house for the next, you know, 14 days. Brian, game on. No, I think, I think the how to is, is something that a, that a, that a group of leaders should take on. Because I do know other districts are, are approaching this differently. And I, and Dr. Pashka pointed out places he sees in our current structure, we just need to start it. I can accept that, that this big calendar should get some level of approval. So families can see when does school start? When does school end? When are we likely to have spring break? When are we, you know? But, but just acknowledge that there is, that I think there's work to be done on what that school year might look at. Yeah.
I want to be clear. I'm talking the number of customers that in the afternoon. Cause they're actually quite busy doing whatever they're doing at their desk.
Backpedal, backpedal, backpedal.
Think you're going to be safe at home?
Okay. So at this point, is there any more discussion? Oh, Superintendent Pasha.
Oh, for the 21, 22 calendar, if you approve it, then it gets released to the public and we can take internal stuff off there. But I would table it definitely for another meeting to approve. If you're still discussing the days that we have school, because once you release it, you don't want it, you, you don't want to have a modified version later, because then you've got them both out there. And even if your website says one calendar, people have a calendar posted on the bulletin board or their refrigerator and they're making plans. So I, I'd rather back off if you're actually considering the changes in the date. If it just comes down to um, whether school is going to occur that day or not, then it's probably fine to release it. Makes sense?
It makes sense. And I, and I don't, I wouldn't want to presuppose the outcome of a, of a group evaluating this and making proposals. But I also think it's important that families like to see the general form of the calendar. I mean, I think people need to understand, oh, next year we're going back to after Labor Day, you know, 21, 22. I, we're likely to end at this time. And I, I would like to see us get that out. I can't imagine that a proposal is going to come forward that does something big like changing the start day or eliminating spring break or something, you know, really big. It could. And, and you know, honestly, we've done that in the course of a year. We've changed the calendar in that year to accommodate staff development or when it's been critical. I would tend to want to get people the big, the big timeframe. But know that we need to, we need to dive in and start working on what an alternative looks like. And how do we balance those needs of the staff versus the needs for contact with students?
Right, and even if we do say need to make some adjustment, it's not going to happen at the next meeting. I mean, that's something that would be happening further down the road and I wouldn't want to wait that long before giving this larger overview to our families. Is there any more discussion or questions regarding that? Otherwise, we do have a motion in a second on the table, so. Becky, are you there? Can you clarify? Did we take a motion in a second?
No, we did not.
Okay, well, we did not. We jumped right in. All right, so. All right, this is your turn, Brian. Do you have, do we have a motion to approve the 2021 2022 academic school year calendar?
So moved.
There you go. Okay, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor? Oppose same sign. Motion carries. All right, so next up is a bid award for Tilden Deferred Maintenance Project. And do we have a motion to accept the lowest qualified bid?
Second.
Okay.
I couldn't find my mute button.
Well, we'll get the hang of this by the time we get out. All right, so do we have any discussion regarding this? Any questions? All right, so all those in favor of accepting the lowest qualified bid, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. All right, next up is approval of well, is a review and a motion to approve policy number 213. So we'll start with reviewing it. And then so this one is a second reading of this policy. And this is talking about the school board committees. And since we didn't make any large adjustments, we brought it in line with our current practices, chess listing, which what we were considering standing committees previously, the wrong committees had been posted there. And so thank you for catching that, Director Hadi. And so at this point, are there any other questions regarding that? Otherwise, we can take a motion to approve policy 213.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose same sign. All right, motion carries. So the next policy that we're going to the second reading on is policy number 206. And so this is public participation in school board meetings and complaints. And so we have made some adjustments to this and we did see in the beginning in our items for discussion, the addendum for what the form would look like for people who want to participate. And but that was only in its first reading. So we can go over this as well and see if there's questions or discussion for the second reading.
So my question is is logistical. We're going into a board less where we would have board listening sessions prior to the meeting. So I would presume like the moment that this is approved, it becomes our policy and our next board session would have that. We would just need to think about how that happens in a tele meeting environment. The the listening session piece, that's just logistics. And then I would presume when we get back to where we can meet in a more traditional board setting, it's just going to be like a sign up sheet or something for board members to agree which times they're getting there early. Something, is that how you guys envision it?
Yes, that's, that's the thought is that we would have a rotating schedule of which board members would get there 15 minutes early. All right, so are there any other questions or discussion regarding the policy? Otherwise, since that is the second reading, we can take a motion to approve policy 206.
I'm moved.
Second. Okay, is there any, is there any more discussion? Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose same sign. All right, motion carries. So the second reading for policy 203.5, the school board meeting agenda. And so this was just kind of outlining what the the agenda would look like, yeah.
And it looked like the only difference from the previous one is just to clarify the timeline of getting materials out.
Yep. We had previously left that that blank and we did fill that in just to say that we would routinely get for director directors, five days in advance of the meeting, board directors would get documents for the meeting. And so we left routinely in there to keep it open to possibly if something were to come up that maybe it's only three days ahead of time, but our current practice puts us getting it on a Friday before the Wednesday meeting and so current practice is that five days out.
All right. I like the current practice of Becky working every.
What could come up?
I don't know. I don't know what could come up. Yeah. Okay, so do we have any other discussion about this policy? All right, so then with that being the second reading, we can motion to approve policy 203.5.
So moved.
All right. Okay, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. All right, motion carries. Future meeting dates are posted. So this is something that we're going to have to work on is our future meeting dates and what policy or what committees are going to look like if we'll also zoom in for committees. And I imagine we will still be doing that. We do still have work to do. But the meeting dates are there next week. We do have our first round of interviews on Monday and Tuesday. And that we can talk about that. I would like to talk about MSBA still in a bit. And we have a policy. Oh, that was supposed to get fixed on this and it is not quite yet. There is an error on April 6th. It's not the policy committee meeting, that is the facilities committee is meeting on April 6th. Yep, and that was, we thought that was fixed. So no big deal. We know who's going and who's not. And then the regular board work session and the board meeting. So that's what we have coming up. But I would like to fill in about MSBA and kind of steps for next week. And Superintendent Pasha, I don't know if you want to be in here when we talk about it. I know that this is technically you can see it online, but okay. So just some logistics and I'm even just going to pull up what Barb sent to me so that we all have it. The idea is that we really want to make sure that we're ensuring all six of our semifinalists have a level playing field and this is really important. And so what MSBA is recommending is that the interviews do not get posted online until they are all completed. Because otherwise other candidates are able to go back and view what previous candidates have said, right, especially since we're doing it over two days. And for the same reason, they're recommending they aren't live streamed. And we've already talked about that, that once these do get posted, not having comments available on the posting so that people can't write negative things about the candidates and really trying to keep those comments to a minimum on social media. We want to make sure the public is able to still participate in these meetings. And initially, we were not planning on televising them. It was going to be that people were going to come to a meeting. And at the, had we been able to do the interviews in the regular way, the public would not be allowed to comment in that meeting. And so maintaining that same plan with not commenting on it on social media was also discussed and that's really for our candidates. And then they also wanted, well, we'll talk about that first. Are there any questions or concerns with that? Does that sound like a good plan to you? Okay. All right, and so then lastly, MSBA has been getting a lot of questions about how to do remote meetings. And initially, there was the guidance that one person had to be in attendance. If we were to do this, that say, right, and so just to clarify so that the community knows and so that we all know that the law says one person should be on site except when not feasible due to a health pandemic. And so yes, and so we have, I don't know, I don't know if they changed the law specifically for this. I think they did.
They did. They did.
They did. Okay, so it is specifically. So their recommendation is that we all stay home and not send one person in to sit at a meeting all alone. So that is, that's the plan as long as everyone is good with that. This will be our last in-person meeting until the shelter at home mandate or request is taken off the table. And so all of our meetings will be Zoom from here on out. And I'm sure my children will start jumping in behind me at some point in these meetings because that's what happens when you're home with the kids. And as soon as a phone goes up to your ear, they start screaming. Which I'm sure people at home are understanding very well right now. So anyway, are there any discussions about that, concerns or thought? The interviews are all being done at home now, yeah, due to the I believe we're doing Zoom, Becky, can you confirm that?
Yeah, I can confirm that. Also, just everybody make sure that you're taking yourself off of mute when you're talking because I can't hear you. So yes, all of the interviews are going to be done via Zoom. I am going to be creating Zoom meetings tomorrow and then sending those invitations out to the candidates as well as MSBA because they will be present as well.
Thank you, Becky. I just wanted to make sure that all six had the exact same access so that we didn't have like five pictures in one audio or something crazy like that. Thank you.
No problem, completely understand.
And then while we have you talking, just to confirm, we have set up an admin forum for the three finalists, which is a new addition that we've, we've added now.
Yes, I reached out to Jen to help me with that and 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 then the world blew up in Minnesota with the governor, so we will be handling that tomorrow, so.
Okay, great. All right, thank you very much for all your hard work.
Yeah, definitely.
So what about the admin forums? What about? How are those, how are we going to conduct those?
So those should be conducted the same way. Yep. With, we talked about that last night at the meeting that we would have it more organized so that it could work better on this virtual platform to try to make sure everyone wasn't jumping in and keeping that more routine, so.
And somebody help me understand what the feedback part looks like.
Yeah, yeah, what is the output and how does the board get and consider that output?
So we've talked about doing a Google form and having them be able to immediately provide that feedback digitally from whatever their location is and then MSBA could just right from there start putting that together for us. And they would be able to get that to us quickly.
And then they mentioned last night, if we do remote interviews, do you would just ask all the questions? Is that still the case?
Sure.
Yes. Just to try to keep this whole mute unmute thing a little bit easier, so. See, I just muted myself. So are there any other questions then regarding that? Otherwise, we can let Superintendent Pasha know and he can come back just for the exciting adjournment motion. All right. Otherwise, at this point, we really are at the end of the meeting. And so unless, does anyone else have any other business that we need to discuss? I'd just like to say, stay healthy. Continue working to flatten that curve as Scott has said and I I have faith in our community. I think we'll come together. Great to be able to work on this and we already have, so.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, aye. Aye, oppose same sign. All right, motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Right.